You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com. Welcome to the Ball, Sucker Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 344. It'd be St. John's favorite podcast. Jeremiah Morrell, executive video producer, audio engineer, scorekeeper of things that have been wronged to us. Zach Bircham, welcome.
Good evening.
Wow, that's all you got?
Well, I was.
You're talking a million miles an hour off air.
I've also got stuff going, like Dakota's not in studio, but he's discussing the fact.
He's not here, but he has time to talk.
Yeah. Shifting gears from Indy car racing and.
Yeah, well, he's Dakota's about to shut off power to most of the city. So our viewership is going to be down tonight because they can't watch. Because Dakota not only was not here, but he's shutting off.
He's actively ruining ratings.
And he's like, I can hear a baseball game and I'm wondering if I'm about to shut their power off, which would be hilarious, honestly, a little bit funny. But I'm like, I live a hundred yards from a ball diamond, from the ball diamonds. I'm like, are you about to shut my power off Dakota? He's, I don't think so.
It was, let's see now, he just flips switches that he doesn't know what to do.
He said, he's like, I don't really know. Thirty-three percent chance about to shut these kids' baseball game down.
You keep us updated. This show tonight, we are going to be concluding the candidate series of the county council at large race. Mercifully, it is night number three over two months of talking about the same exact thing. We're, we're excited to do it.
You don't have to lie.
But oh my God, am I ready for something else?
At least we broke, we've broken it up with a couple of other races, like the judges race broke up and a couple of things. But yeah, it seems like it's been a while since we've had like non-talk about all the ARP funds and then the jail and all the fun stuff.
It's, it's, it's enjoyable. We're not selling this very well. It's going to be a great show, everybody. You're going to love it. This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. We're here to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes we'll provoke you, other times we'll make you laugh, but hopefully you'll always learn something new. We just did 25 minutes in Patreon, started out with Zach complaining about technology changing. And then we shifted into old man mower talk. And then we finished with some Indy car news. So pretty much what you'd expect in a Patreon edition from us.
Yeah, grumpy Midwestern news.
If you want to hear it, patreon.com/ballsuckerliberty. That is how we pay the bills and how this place stays functional, pays for the internet, keeps the lights on. If Dakota doesn't flip the switch, heating and air conditioning, although Brian, roommate Brian made it a little chilly in here today.
I'm. It is a little chilly, but I like it.
It's, it's like David Letterman's studio. It's going to get us out quick.
You thought he'd know we were coming because he passed me.
He did message me and said, oh, I did whatever. I don't know if he said he turned the fan on or he turned the circulation on or something, but he said it was a little chilly back here. So he was taking care of it.
He passed me on my run today on his way home from work, so we were coming.
Have to say thank you once again to the, the candidate series sponsors, the always incredible and awesome Ink and Ale Brew House. They have, they've been with us for the entire candidate series this year. They're making constant announcements and getting ready to have their big opening downtown Newcastle. Super excited about that. And then our OG original sponsor, Wylens Flowers for all of your flower needs in, in Newcastle and Henry County. Apologies, graduations, wedding receptions, anything that happens, you can get them. The official florist of the Ball, Sucker Liberty did, did all of the weddings for Dakota and I. So one for each still. It's not like, it's not like we're at two or three each. The, the official florist of the show though.
We're not, we're not the Bob and Tom show.
Well, we're only in year six of existence. Give us 40 or 50 years and we'll see things that sometimes changes happen. And we've had a lot of co-hosts in here too. We've had, we've had more than just Dakota and I have had, had the flowers on. Anyway, welcome Kyle Allen.
Thanks for having me, guys. I appreciate it.
Glad to have you. So you are one of the seven running for the, the county council seat.
The three of them that are open? Yeah, one of seven.
Three, three, three spots, seven people. It's an at-large race, so you're running for the entire Henry County area.
Correct.
You are the incumbent or one of the incumbents.
I think I'm the only incumbent right now, caucused in.
Yep. And you were caucused in when a friend of the show and early, early co-host Clay Morgan retired to, to spend more time with his barber shop and then his mayor's race. So tell us about yourself. I think first time we've been, been through this process and getting to know you as a candidate.
Yeah, so it was interesting. I never really thought much about politics at all in my life. And this is, this is very local, but it's, it's very important. I, it's hard to explain how I was led into the caucus race. And then, you know, that election occurred and here I am. I will say having the last name Allen alphabetically, that's positive on the old voting scorecard and the incumbent next to it. So I think.
Spend your name the whole time though, right? You didn't, no, no games were played.
No, that's the crux of my, my campaign is that, well, hopefully they just hit it because it's at the top. No, I'm kidding, but um, yeah, so caucus stand. And the reason that I decided, yeah, I'll give this a go is, you know, when we decided, my wife and I, Michelle, to move back to Knightstown, where she grew up and her family still is, it was with the idea that, hey, this is going to be where we're at for the long haul now. And at that point in time, you know, I think our daughter was just two, we had two back at that time. We didn't have our, our, our son yet. And it was like, all right, what, what role can I play in, in helping shape the community so that at some point, when my daughter is grown, maybe she has a, a reason to say, I don't want to leave here. And my joke about that is because when I get older, I'm going to need somebody to change my diapers. But, but anyway, uh, just, just the idea of being involved. And, and I can't put my finger on what it was. It wasn't anything local, but there was something that occurred. Imagine back in 2020 with politics, the way they are, 21, whatever the year was with, I can't even remember. Is this 24? I think it was right at the, the beginning of 2022 when I started. So lots of stuff's going on and it was one of those things where Kyle, you can be pissed about something. Are you just going to sit there or are you going to take action and try to be involved? So it was kind of just a, hey, if, if you've got an opinion, if you've got feelings about something, it's one thing to sit on the sidelines. It's the other to lace up the old shoes and get on the hardwood. So that was kind of the motivating factor was, well, let's give this a shot and see what it's all about.
So tell us about your, about yourself. You're not a Henry County native originally, you're from Hancock or.
Yeah, yeah, Hancock County, Newtown.
So tell us about your background, your bio, stuff you're into.
Well, I think I'm going to lead with Indy car racing. That, that's my, my hobby, my passion, our, our family tradition each year. You know, my dad, it's just dad and I. And then now some extended members of our crew have joined to, to be part of our, our group out there. But gosh, I think 91 was my first race, that first 500. And I've only missed one since then, and we don't have to count that one. So it, other than that, that I was just so excited to see the Indy car topic on the.
In the Patreon.
In the Patreon today, yeah, but.
I do, I real quick while I, while I on it, I don't have Dakota as a co-host tonight, so I failed miserably. $50 a month or more atop of every episode, I'm supposed to say thank you. That is Sports Corner Newcastle. That's the, the sweet embroidery work I got on my shirt and they'll do all your athletic stuff. Anthony Meyer, Different Breed Trucking and John Phillips of Andy Moore Buick GMC and Fishers. So got to say thanks to those guys again.
Back, back.
Got to pay the bills, man. That's right. I gotta, if we, if we committed to something, I'm going to take care of it. And I, sometimes I'm a failure, but I catch it when I can't.
That's half the battle catching it. Anyway, so I guess paying the bills aside from being a huge Indy car fan, I'm a lawyer by trade. Took a year off. I graduated from DePaul University in Greencastle, Indiana.
Which means the Paul, I think.
W.
Yeah.
Yep, W. So DePaul Tigers, Monon Bell's the big thing that puts them on the map from a sports standpoint against Wall Bash for football. But I was a basketball player. That's what led me there and playing basketball is what really allowed me to go there because it was expensive. But basketball paid for three of my four years of, of tuition. So loved every bit of it, took a year off after, after graduation and then kind of interned with an in-house counsel at a, at a local company in Indianapolis and then went off to law school. And here we are. I never thought I'd be in the estate planning and elder law, business planning realm of the law. All through law school, let's be in court, trial, trial, trial. And after passing the bar, I started the public defender in Marion County. And boy, did I get plenty of.
You got your courtroom experience.
Got my courtroom experience to the extent that, that, that I felt comfortable. And from there, um, did some stuff on my own in the criminal world, worked with a couple of smaller firms here and there. And then about 2014, yeah, 10 years. Wow. Started in the, with a firm that did nothing but estate planning and elder law. And then from there, started to pick up the business planning aspect because it, it connects a lot with estate planning. And then.
So is that like Marion County or Hancock County or where were you located at the time?
Back at that firm, I was in Fishers at a, at a firm in Fishers and had really good friends there. And it was just one of those deals where there was actually, Indiana Lawyer is a publication that goes out from Bar Association. And there was a study about access to justice, equal access. And Henry County came up on the list, I think in like the, you know, don't quote me on this, but like the bottom 10% of counties in Indiana as far as per capita representation of lawyers to population. And I had been thinking about starting my own practice for a while. And with everything, the way it was kind of coming together in our personal lives of maybe we'll move to Knightstown. It kind of just made sense that I'll open a practice. There, there aren't that many attorneys out in Henry County. So people need it. And, and I had a lot of that feedback from people in, at least in Knightstown that, that knew, knew my extended family or my wife's family, my family now, saying, yeah, we could use what you do out here. So that's kind of how it all happened and, and where, where we are now and how I got there. So.
Well, very good.
It's all kind of fallen into place. I'm, I'm happy. It's a lot of work, um, but it, but it's, it's very worthwhile. And I like working with people that want to be there, working with you and doing the things that you're doing, assisting them versus the people that are compelled to be working with you because they've been arrested. Or they're, they're going through a nasty divorce and they have to have, you know, I'm a, I'm a laid back, let's all get along kind of person. And I got enough of the, oh, the, the uncivil nature of some of the legal processes in the legal field early on. So yeah, good transition.
So you've gotten a couple of years on the council.
Yeah.
Kind of a, a preview of it. And, and you've said, I've seen enough of this. I want to do it more. What, what's the, what's the motivation to say, okay, I want to, I want a full four-year term of my own this time?
So when you start, you don't know what you don't know. After two years, you know what you don't know, but you also know how to learn and get the information that's necessary to make informed decisions. I'm a, I'm a guy that likes to learn something new every day. And I, I find myself in the weeds and researching and looking stuff up. And just from that background with the law and the way that statutes and the laws in regards specifically to funding, how they can change funding for county, local governments, how, how all of that stuff seems to be shifting quite a bit with new mechanisms to, to allow counties to get funding for the services we need. Yeah, it's interesting, but, but what I've learned and what I know now, I feel like I can be much more valuable going forward. Just because I, I have more information, knowledge and some experience. Yeah, absolutely. And I'm going to be the first to admit that, but now I'm at a point where I don't feel like it would be beneficial for me to not have the ability to provide some reasonable and positive impact in the decision-making processes. Cause again, I'm one of seven, but if there's something that comes up where I feel like I, I have an ability to lend a, a thought that, that makes sense or, or that can help explain to members of the community or other council members, an issue that we're working through, then I absolutely want to be able to give that. I'm not going to call it wisdom because I'm not that kind of a person, but I want to be able to share that with people. And I don't want to just, I don't want to step away. It's, I like it now. It's been challenging.
Feel like you're just getting started.
Yeah, you're just getting started and you don't, you don't want to stop doing something that, that you're, because you know what you're, you're doing now, what you're starting to actually enjoy.
So let's, let's talk about one of the issues that you've, you've jumped into on the council. And that is the, uh, the way we've been spending some, some money that the county landed in and.
The ARP funds?
The ARP, well, the ARP funds, but also more specifically to start with, the council's role in preserving and, and what to do with the inventory of some of the buildings we have. So county, county, there's three main buildings downtown. There's one that's sold, there's other, there's, the last couple of years, we've been shedding some buildings, shedding some property. So wanted your take on how that process is going. And I think it gives some insight into candidates as to how they view what the county should own and what we need to operate.
So some of them that were money pits, those are the ones that have gone by the wayside. And those, I think, I know there were a couple that were recently just let go of. And when I say recently, in the last year or so.
Yeah.
But as far as the facilities that we have right now, we have a, a beautiful courthouse that needs a lot of work. That won't take much to, when I say won't take much, it won't take much for, from like a beautification standpoint. That's not the, the idea because it's, it's what a courthouse should look at, look like when you drive up to one in any county seat in Indiana. At least that's the way I feel from the courthouses I've been to driving around.
It's historic, it's historic 1800s courthouse.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a 1970s urban, urban mess, right?
Yeah, yeah, like the jungle downtown Indianapolis anyway. It's got foundation issues. It's got a lot of things and then all the employees that work in the courthouse building, please do this, do that, you know? Whether it be worried about mold or we can't get air circulation in here. We need windows that open, whatever it is. It's something that, it's a facility, it's a building the county needs to take care of. And it's something that the employees that work in there want to have occur as well. So from the council, I was on the ARP committee to help with the decision on how to allocate those funds. And it made sense to take care of the things that we've got that are in use right now. And it's not like you can just bulldoze a 150-year-old courthouse, right? Nobody wants to do that. Well, maybe somebody does, but it's worth preserving. And that's why some of the money has been allocated to that from ARP. The Justice Center, it's, it's, it's a good facility, but you know, I can't remember how many years old it is. 30 maybe.
It was built around 2000. Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting close and wear and tear, you know? It, it's got things that need to be updated and we hear about that from the different occupants from the different parts of the, the county government offices in there, the, the justice branch. And those are almost necessities. And I know that the, um, the building over here, the.
Masonic building or the office building.
Yeah, I hear that one quite a bit, you know? Woo, if it, when's the last time you were on the third floor, Kyle? You know, I've been up there and yeah, I know there are some issues. So those are things that, those are more borderline necessities and those aren't like luxury spending items that you got to take care of.
All right. So that's, that's the, the maintaining what we've got. The county did get $9 million in ARP funds.
Yeah.
And I think that was probably during, during the time you've served on the council or coincides about with when you landed.
Correct, yeah.
So hindsight is 2020. Do you feel like we successfully managed that $9 million as a county? Or do you think we, some of it I know went to plug some holes, some went to some, you know, to these building improvements. There were a lot of folks that said, hey, we need to do a major, major infrastructure investment or whatever with it. Cause it's a one-shot deal. How, how do you come down on that?
I think that with that money, it was, we also knew that Ready 2.0 would be coming down the pipe pretty soon. And there's no guarantee there.
Regional fund.
Yeah, regional fund. Think we're getting 15, is it 15 million of the 35 that was allocated? I can't remember exactly because I didn't look at my notes about that before I came in. But you know, that's going to be a lot of money that can be used for infrastructure. Taking care of some of those necessities in those buildings was, that was a top of mind thing. I think for everybody that was on the, the ARP committee, there, there weren't any objections to that from my, from my recollection. I think at this point, just checking earlier, I think we have 3.3 million dollars left of the ARP money. I know there's some line items that have been kind of going back and forth and some of the, the repairs that need to be made. And you know, where can we save some money? Where can we, that, that's been allocated. So I, I think a reasonable job has been done from the standpoint that here it is, it's all coming at you so fast. You gotta have so much of it allocated by the end of 24. And then by the end of 26, it's got to be spent or it's got to go back to the federal government, all these things. So I wish there were, I wish the county, my wishlist, I wish the county were in a spot where that money could have been used for more luxury economic impact things. But what's the point of putting money into things that allow the rest of your, your facilities that you have, your structures to just crumble, right? You got to take care of that stuff first.
Yeah. So the view is that you had a one-time opportunity to, to shore up some buildings that generational you have to have.
Feel like that's a very good assessment, yeah.
So the, Zach, tell me if you've heard this one before. We've been talking about these for weeks. Henry County had a, a giant political football land in its lap in January with their insurance carrier saying, hey, we're not going to work with you anymore. They scrambled, the, the county insurance agent scrambled, found a new policy, but now you've, you're looking at some much higher deductibles, much higher exposure. How, how is a county supposed to handle that in the short term? And what can we do to, to be ready for the next renewal cycle? And what can the county do to deal with?
In, in the short term, you know, allocating funds for that, it's, it's a matter of looking through the budget and seeing where we can re-appropriate some of the funds to cover that. And we were able to do that. Going forward, that's going to be our biggest topic this summer when we go. One of our biggest topics, I would guess. I can't think of anything bigger to discuss as far as huge chunks of money that you didn't have programmed into the budget last year.
Cause it's an annual budget cycle, right?
It's an annual budget cycle in the end. By, by August, I say the summer, by August, you have to have that complete submitted. But going through, you know, June, then heavily in July, trickling into August, we have several budget meetings just to work through all, all of the, the various needs of the county. Have proposals submitted from each, each department. And then we work, work through those. I'd like to see some changes with how we do the budgeting sessions, just to make them more efficient and let, there's no reason that we need to sit in nickel and dime. Hey, where can we shave 500 bucks off of your budget? Cause that's not going to do a damn thing, but I don't have the answer for how I want to change that yet. I want to get a couple of opinions from a couple of people outside the county that, that seem to have a pretty efficient process. But that's something that's been on my mind here in the last couple of weeks.
So the, the process is, is manual for our county, right? Like it seems like we use consultants for a lot of stuff. Baker Tilly comes in and says, hey, you should adjust this tax. You have consultants that do that, but we're actually setting our own budget as a county.
We set our own budget as a county with the funds that we have available. In a couple of weeks, Baker Tilly will come in and say, hey, here is what we anticipate coming in next year revenue wise. So at least we have a ballpark figure to work with as we set our budget going into the future. Because we need to know, hey, there was a 911 tax that was initiated. Did the money, the revenue from that, did it pan out to the extent that we were, we were told it would based on population? What it, you know, what the, the rate increase was? What do we need to do in order to cover our expenses for next year? If they're going to be well above what we have coming in? Do we need to have a, you know, do we need to have a new tax that's going to allow us to pay for things to help with? You know, EMS is the, one of the big conversation points this year.
So how do you, I mean, we've heard folks that have said, hey, we're taxed enough. We've had, you know, I, I haven't had a single candidate since 2017 that's come through here, Zach, and said, hey, we want to raise your taxes. They never say that ahead of time.
I don't want to raise your taxes, but we may have to.
Done it, right? So that's, that's the, that's the conversation is where, I guess where the question for me is where do you land on that? A lot of times the state says, well, you've got the tool, you've got, if you want a jail, you need to raise this income tax.
Exactly.
Or you've got your public safety income tax.
Right.
You know, that it, state sits on a couple of billion dollars in, in money. And then they say, hey, county council person, you guys need to pass this tax to, to fund whatever the next thing is you need.
Your tools are to tax your citizens to raise the revenue. The way that trickles down, another way to look at that is they get to pass the buck on to the counties, especially when they run for, for reelection. That way they don't have to say anything about what they've done from a tax perspective. What you usually hear is, oh, we're trying to get rid of property tax or we're trying to get, our goal is to get rid of an, the income tax. And then I've heard those things recently and seen some of those.
One candidate for governor is doing that right now.
Exactly. So in reality, that would be fantastic if that were the case, if we didn't have to pay income taxes in the state or even locally. But in reality, the community, this county has a lot of things that we need in order to operate and function at a basic level. And if required services become something that's potentially on a chopping block as to how it gets funded, or, or do we have to put some kind of a new inter-local government memorandum, memorandum of understanding or agreement in place for, for EMS services between the county and the city of Newcastle? Or what's that going to look like? You know, we've got to be able to provide these services to the people in Henry County. And if that means you have to raise a tax or institute a new tax, like the EMS tax, that's something that we have to consider if we look at what that actually does from a revenue standpoint, if it makes sense to do so. And from a revenue standpoint, sure, it may be $50 and more. And I'm going back from like the 911 numbers I remember from last year, like the, the 0.1% would cost $50 and more per year for somebody making $50,000, right? You have to think, is it worth paying $50 more a year in order to ensure that our 911 services are functioning and funded appropriately to function? And we have the equipment, the backup equipment in case of disasters or power outages. And in my opinion is, yeah, I want those things to be there when we need them, if we need them. So whether it's about, I'm never going to say, oh, I'm, I'm never going to raise taxes. If that kills me from getting elected, then, then so be it. But the same point, we have to be reasonable and understand that there's stuff that we need. And for the community to grow, which I think we're right there on the verge. It's possible that there could be a fairly large influx of business and residents coming here in the next 10 years. We have to be able to support the business that does want to come here and the people that want to come here. All of that coming in helps our tax base, right? But you can't support them if you don't have fire and EMS and, and police, all your first responders and, and the infrastructure to, to help all that. It all takes money at the end of the day.
You definitely see the trend is Western Henry County is getting ready to get some, get some growth.
Right.
And new homes starts, right?
So add me to the list.
Welcome, 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 welcome. Glad to have you. Another giant hot potato issue that we've seen in the, in the race has been the detention center, which we broke ground on in 2020 and we opened up in 2022.
Shortly after I started, yeah.
And they're active, there's active talk of potentially expanding, adding a pod and spending 10, 15 million dollars on an expansion.
There's, okay, let me give you some background.
Pull your mic in a little closer for us.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was drinking my water. Now I'm knocking my, the mic out of the way here. I'm technically illiterate. Anyway, um, within the council, we have a designee that serves on our, our local J-Rac committee or the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. So the purpose of that council, which includes basically every stakeholder from the criminal justice system, from our mental health providers in the county, probation, you know, that's part of the, the, the system. But everybody involved, we're at a table and we get to start discussing what our options are going forward. How do we make our, our criminal justice system better? How do we treat the people within the criminal justice system better? And when I say treat, I mean, how do we ensure that they are getting the proper? And when I say treat, I mean, how do we ensure that they are getting the proper placement for the types of offenses or what's leading them? And at the end of the day, it's all about recidivism, trying to lower the crime rate and, and the amount of times people reoffend. So part of this, there, there's two prongs. One of the prongs is you, it's all evidence-based. You look at the evidence as a group that you can see within your community and your justice system to say, hey, we have issues here. These, you identified the, the problem areas, the things that you can fix, the things that will benefit the entire, the entire system. And from, from one perspective, perspective I'm bringing to it is partially from my previous experiences working as a public defender in criminal law, but also from the standpoint of how does a decision or, or something we do within an adjustment in the system? How does that affect our bottom line as a county? How do we save money? You know, if we, I think it was like five or $600,000, we had to approve for reappropriation for inmate medical expenses at our last, um, council meeting. If we've got, you know, 50, a hundred more beds in a new pod, that's a heck of a lot more mouths to feed, medical.
And you've gone from a hundred to 200 people in the population in, in two years.
Right. So there are bottlenecks that we have identified right now that do exist within the system. And it's a matter of, yeah, sorry, matter of finding ways to get, you know, let's just, let's pick on the prosecutor's office and the public defender office, because in every county that has those two, those two offices, which most of them do have both, they all have prosecutors. That's where a lot of the cases are being handled. So making sure that they are actively working together to help move their, their clients and their cases through the system. So you look, use the evidence that you can gain as a, as a, as a group. And then you take the evidence-based practices that are tested to, to help implement those practices for mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, a lot of times that's connected. Making sure that the people that need to be incarcerated are incarcerated, the people that need help, but not necessarily needing to be incarcerated or in the right, placed in the right spots. There's a huge placement issue all over the, all over the place. So at the end of the day, long story short is there's no consensus and, and I don't think we need a new jail pod. The, the, the benefit of, I just came here from a, a work session that was discussing this. The benefit of our work session and, and what I translated over to that meeting tonight was within J RAC, we're starting to identify where our issues are. Nothing will happen fast, but if we just build a jail, if you build it, they're going to come. And we're never going to get past this, I call it the middle ages version of treating individuals or, or working criminals through the criminal justice system. We have to get to a point where we're starting to get into the 21st century with what actually works to help lower recidivism. And if the community can see the impact, I mean, a lot of families have loved ones that are impacted with abuse issues, drug abuse, alcohol abuse, you know, whatever it is that are, that can be victims of crime or mental health issues. If we, if we take care of our community, both from the standpoint of not being soft on crime where, oh yeah, you know, ever, nobody should be in jail. This isn't what I'm talking about. It's a, it's an issue of if we take care of the people in our community, getting them the help they need, the, the actual things that are going to keep them out of jail in the future. It's never going to be perfect. This is, sounds philosophical. There's evidence that, that supports all of this. But if we can take care of them, the people in our community, they're going to be productive members of our community. That's the goal, which then allows them to then contribute through income, which pays, you know, pay tax. It's all connected in essence. And if, what we know now is though we don't have the programming, the placement for a lot of those necessities. And many communities don't, you know, Hamilton County is kind of the, the bar setter in a lot of things. We know we're, we're nowhere near that obviously, but we've got to be able to start looking at how we, we don't build a jail and don't have money, or we don't build a jail and to the point now, we don't have money to consider. Hey, let's get the Y O C fixed up where we can now, instead of spending 10, $15,000 a month sending juvenile secured detention facilities out of the county, we can, we can have them here and we've got bed space now for our county, our facility to hold people.
And some other counties surrounding.
Exactly. So we have some facilities that we're, that we're looking into and, and so to repurpose or, you know, use what we've got first.
So you don't see the momentum to, to necessarily act right now on, on adding onto a jail or expanding.
No, no.
All right. Is that, we've heard, we've heard different opinions on that from, from folks in the race. It's one of the few places we've heard different opinions from people running in this race. Some say that, yeah, we gotta go right now and you get, you know, get ahead while the, while the costs are low. And some have said, no, let's stop and talk about it. And we've heard, heard, heard some commissioner candidates and others saying maybe invest in other areas on the human side versus the, the capital, the, the, the structural side.
The evidence shows that investing more on the human side will help lower the population in the jail. Now, I'm not saying that, and Judge McCord made a really good point today, looking through his inmate list just for, or the inmate list just for the last week and saying, this is what the averages are, you know? There's not that much wiggle room, but on the same token, there's still, if you start to move some of the individuals that we do have the capability moving through the system a little quicker.
Yeah.
Then, then, then it's going to free things up.
He joined us on the show last week.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you were maybe of the 180 or 200 people that were there, probably 40 or 50 were in that, that section where you could nudge them through the system quicker.
Yeah. And I think that's fairly representative, I would say. But then that's a difference of an average of 210 down to 170 inmates. And that's, if that's 40, that's 40, 40 less people to take care of medically, 40 less mouths to feed. We've got plenty of room. We don't need to be there yet. So that, I think that before we would ever, before I would ever consider my one vote being cast to, to fund a new pod, we've got to tackle what that first, we've got to explore how we get that to occur first, which we are exploring. And that's one of the focuses of J RAC.
And the, do you think one of the, let me ask this carefully, the medical question has been a very high sensitive item the last six weeks or so. Do you think that that alone is enough to kill an expansion of, if you add another hundred, another headcount in there, the medical for another hundred people?
Oh, I think that's a huge factor.
Yeah.
A fact, that definitely plays into it. Yeah. I mean, and it's, that's not something you can bypass. That's a duty that you have. When you are a, a jail, you have to take care of the people that are in there, you know? You can't pass that on anywhere else. So.
Jump in at any time if you want to, Zach.
Yeah. Just, yeah, I'm, it's been interesting because there has been some people are kind of gung ho. Honestly, when it was cheap was when they built the jail is when it'd been good to build the, I think. Somebody said the cost at the time with the added the extra pot would have been like two to three million extra. And now they're talking like 10 to 13 million to add one on now.
Yeah, I've heard.
Kind of thing. And then, yeah.
14.
And we had this tiny jail before and it was too small and it was overcrowded lawsuits pending all that stuff. And then the minute we got the new one, it was like, it's full. And so you have to wonder if they put a new pod on, would it be a matter of like weeks or months? And somehow they would have found a way to fill that up.
That's what I say. If you build it, they will come.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's a philosophy with other things. I'm not sure if it's true with jails, but yeah. Cause I pointed out a couple of weeks ago, I was like, during COVID, they weren't allowed to have trials and they came up with different ways of working things around because they literally, you know, the courts weren't moving at all.
Right.
I was like, maybe like, that wasn't that long ago. I know it feels like it to some people. Maybe they need to look back at those policies and say, what were we doing in 2020 when we couldn't get anybody through courtrooms? Well, we kept them out of jail. Maybe we need to be doing that now is if the person's on a flight risk, they're not violent. Do they need to be in the jail or something like that? Whatever it is, I'm not sure what those people are.
No matter which side of the fence you land on, from the perspective of if they're charged with the crime, they should be in jail regardless of what the other issues are. Or if they're charged with the crime, maybe there's a better placement for them. Either way you go, there are going to be the anomalies of this person should be in jail, but bonded out. And then they went and did something bad. And then there's going to be the anomaly of this person shouldn't be in jail. They should be somewhere else getting a treatment to address the real issues. And, you know, something bad happened to them while they were in there. You're going to have anomalies either way. And that's where I think that it's important for the community to understand that. Let's take the, the far ends of each spectrum out and, and, and focus on what's going to make sense for the county, not thinking about just the worst case scenarios on either side.
So by the way, we, we promised Ron Milford, we would give draft updates. The, the Bears are now on the clock. Uh, NFL draft started now. So five minutes, five minutes.
This is just starting.
This is just, yeah, the draft is just now starting and the Bears are on the clock for the first pick in the draft.
I don't even know. Like that's.
Colts pick 15. We got a while.
All Indiana's cared about the last couple of weeks was the WNBA draft, which how bizarrely weird was that? Yeah. Well, the most interesting thing about that, that's a side note thing, since it's a venture draft, is that the number of opponents that they are playing, that are moving their Fever games to larger venues because they're selling more tickets than they have seats in their stadium and they're in their gyms. That's fascinating.
So this is the other tough, we got some, this real winter issues on here. Uh, on my route in, uh, I drive by the Henry Township Community Center, uh, which now has a grill out front and, and tents. Over the course of the winter, township trustee opened a homeless shelter. The, the city essentially shut it down. We now have unhoused folks that live on a sidewalk on, uh, on rape baby way.
I think there was one guy who's, who, one insurance guy, I think, had to do both the county's notification of their issues. And then was also the one that told the county, that told the township trustee, like you aren't insured for this. Cause I was part of the two, they weren't insured to be a homeless shelter.
So now, now the city bans, uh, camping on public grounds.
And in public right of ways.
And in public right of ways. We've always had a homeless issue in Henry County, Kyle.
Okay.
Not, not a surprise, but now we have it in downtown and I think it's become very much visible to folks that maybe didn't realize that that existed.
Right.
So the question that we've had over this candidate series for, for candidates is what role does the council have, if any, in trying to combat that?
I'm glad you're bringing it up because homelessness, it's, it's a big topic across the country in a lot of different places. And it's something hell, the Supreme Court just had hearings about this a couple of days ago, but it's something that a lot of people like to turn a blind eye to. So I think it's good that it is discussed as far as the council goes. Right now, I don't, I don't know what the council can do about that. There are, other than, okay, if we need a, a homeless shelter. Now that, the other piece of that is with it being an issue, we also need to address why the individuals are homeless. Does this tie back into mental health disorders? Does it, or drug or alcohol abuse? Have they had issues there in prior lives that have never been addressed that have led them to be in this situation? Cause if that's the case, again, that goes back to how are we treating these individuals from a community standpoint and, and the justice process? Because jails become homeless shelters essentially at some point in time, especially when it becomes the winter months. So there's a little tie-in from the council. We don't, we don't, we don't legislate. That's, that's not our, our responsibility. Our, our responsibility is to provide the necessary funding to tackle whatever our, our priorities are. I don't know how the council tackles homelessness unless it's something that's brought to us as far as a project. But I, I see a big tie-in with that, with everything that feeds into the, to the J RAC process. Because such a big piece of that process is mental health driven.
And in the J RAC for folks, it's a committee that you're serving on.
Yeah, sorry.
Appointment to that. So I assume the prosecutor, sheriff, the, those, those, the different judges are a part of that committee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Uh, other giant, uh, giant project that's been around for a while in the county is that we have inside Memorial Park, uh, is a leased property that belongs to the county, that belongs to the Henry County Expo Center.
Yeah.
Uh, and a project that is not yet complete. We've had this discussion with the commissioner candidates, with the council candidates of what can the county do? Now that you have a building that has been stalled for a couple of years? What can the county do or should the county have a role in trying to get this project completed? Or what's the future of it?
I, one of the things that I think is, or one of the things that struck me when I first came to Henry County was how does this agricultural historically community not have a dedicated, like true 4H fairgrounds? So I think that that building would be fantastic for 4H use fair, you know? And then for other uses throughout the year. But I, at this point in time, it's, I've, I don't know that any of the truth of it, what's been proposed. But I heard a, let's just call it a rumor, um, that they were going to be asking for potentially some money from the ready grant to help the, one of the big stalling aspects has been getting the infrastructures for water and all of that up there. So if they can get the water and that comes through some of that grant money, I don't know if there's a shot at that or not. I just heard this a day or two ago. But that would, that would be helpful. And then knowing some of the, a lot of the issues that the, the old fairgrounds building has had as far as the electrical issues and concerns with how badly people will be shocked in the future, because there have been some issues with the electricity with people prior. The state of repair there is not good. So i- if the county had the ability to assume that project, I would be in favor of that being a dedicated county 4H space.
So you would be saying, hey, terminate the deal that's with the expo, the lease that they have for the property, have the county take the facility over and then make it be a part of Memorial Park again with the county managing.
Yeah.
The facility.
And, and, and then I would have, I would want the 4H individuals that run 4H to have a, a major stake in how that building is used or developed going forward. I haven't been up there and looked inside of it in probably six or eight months.
Right.
But, uh.
I mean, there's, essentially there's, there's supposed to be two buildings, right? There's one that's the, the inside project wedding venue, et cetera. The, the classroom space. And then the second building that, that's not yet built would be a, the, the livestock building.
In, right.
So.
I don't know much about.
Yeah.
The livestock building, I think that I know that the building that is there right now would be very useful for, even if it's not livestock related activities, very useful for a lot of 4H activities. Again, I don't know if they've put up any walls or any, it was dirt inside and it was a big open space the last time I went in. So I, I don't know what the, what it would be, what it looks like in there now. It doesn't make sense for it just to sit there doing nothing going forward. Cause at some point in time, it's going to get to the point where you get past like a point of no return where there's been too much moisture in there or something that's going to cause all kinds of problems. You don't want that to happen. So.
The building needs a purpose, right?
It, it, the building needs a purpose. And I, I do think that up there, it would be fantastic 4H use. And then, yeah, if, if it's, so at my old firm, we had a satellite office in Park County and we would do, a Rockville, Indiana, we would do different community events or different workshops or, you know, different things. And we would always go to their, we would rent their 4H building out to bring people in. So from that standpoint, there are small uses. If it's, if it, if it can be run as a dedicated venue for, oh, trade show swap meets, whatever, you know? Great. That could be money that the county could make, but at some point you have to decide which way it's going to go, what it's going to be used for.
So the, uh, next little issue that we've identified here is what are your specific issues? Are your specific priorities for the next four years? I don't know if, you know, we've kind of been working through what the council has been saddled with, but maybe your type priorities are the things that you'd like to work on. Uh, we've called this the monarch for the day. You can fix one thing.
I thought about that. I, I want to go, so one of my biggest fears. I thought about that. I want to go. So one of my biggest fears when we learned of what our, the county share of the opioid settlement would be was was that we would just piss money away here and there and not have any real good idea or any good path for how to use those funds. You couple that with, and what I'm doing with J rack is something that I really truly believe in. And I do have passion about it because in my family, we've had, there have been losses in my family due to addiction issues. And I know that there are better ways to treat people because better ways than jail. I know there are mental health issues that, that all over the place within the, within the country, let alone the county. My biggest goal and, you know, if I'm elected again, what I would want to make sure is done, which tonight really helped me believe is possible, is that all the people that are involved from a decision-making, a stakeholder standpoint, help create a system that provides the treatment and the housing and placement for individuals, whether they're in the justice system as criminal defendants, or they might be close to getting there because of mental health or addiction issues. That, that's something that I am passionate about. And that's something that I want to remain, like if I don't get elected again, I still want to remain on the J rack committee. So that at least I can have a, a voice in that and hopefully be part of it. That, that's, that's one of my main focuses. And my, one of my other focuses is to make sure that nobody is, nobody is prioritized or no department is prioritized unreasonably or unnecessarily over another department. And you know, what's the old saying? Rising tide raises all ships or whatever.
Thought it was some animals are more equal than others. I was going Orwell. Not, not Ronald Reagan. A rising tide lifts all ships.
Yeah. So if, if we can all find ways to benefit together with the money that we have and, and provide a better workspace for each department, provide better salaries for the employees, not kill our taxpayers in order to do so from a taxing perspective, you know?
Have you, have you had a fair amount of complaints over the tax bills this week?
I, I.
People coming and saying.
I've had a couple of people that have, that have, have brought it up. Where, oh, I was at the, um, the candidate speed dating night. There were two people there that night that.
Fall in love? With speed dating?
I didn't.
Damn.
But that's probably just because I had Steve Dellinger on one side of me and Jay Davis on the other. And I was, you know, stuck between them all even, yeah.
Just two, two good choices.
But that, that was actually quite a bit of fun. Uh, it was cool. They had, you were there, right?
I was not.
Oh, you were not? Okay.
I was not. I, I, I heard about it and saw, I've.
Had the little shot clock scorekeeper thing in the corner there. It was fun. And I, I jokingly said that, you know, if elected again, I've got enough information, knowledge now at this point, I'm comfortable enough in the role that, you know, sometime there's some bickering that happens at meetings that just doesn't need to happen. So I might just start wearing, you know, a referee shirt in with the whistle and start teeing people up and getting them out of here if, if people get out of line. That's just a way to try to add some levity to, to the discussions, but.
That might go viral. So YouTube stream of that would be hilarious.
So a few, a few folks that that noticed that the, that it cost them more to live here this year than it did last year.
Yeah.
At the speed dating.
There were, yeah, I think there were 20 tables and there were, there were two people that voiced their concerns about that. Now, part of the big jump was something that was totally out of our control because just the nature of the assessments and property values, how they all rose inflated.
Blame the people that overpaid for houses the last couple of years.
I know.
Their, yeah, mine went up like 24%.
It's.
But, and I don't bet, but mine are like any Hamilton County, my property taxes.
The county rate actually went down this, this one year. Don't know that it will in the future, but this, it did.
But it's still, you know, you notice especially when you're an older individual on a fixed income, an $800 twice a year jump in your property taxes is noticeable, right? I don't have a way to fix that. It's, uh, not much we can do there.
Yep. All right. Well.
Most of the taxes we look at at this point in time aren't tied to property. They're tied to income.
It's income tax, right?
Yeah.
Which is going to be a real pain if one of the count, if one of the governor candidates kills the income tax. They're going to have a state, a county income tax and not a state income tax.
And that's funny.
I haven't heard that planned yet.
I was discussing that, whoops, excuse me. I was discussing that with, um, a friend of mine the other day and just saying, yeah. I don't know the legality of this. If the state doesn't, if the state doesn't allow an income tax anymore, is it going to be like the federal government where we have a constitutional issue? We're going to kick it to the states. Now the state has a, a we, we've declared that we're not going to have an income tax at the state level. We're going to kick it to the counties. If that was the case, I think you would have almost like you've got, I don't want to call it mass exodus, but a bunch of people leaving California or Florida or whatever state it is, going other places. I wonder if, how that would affect.
It, it would be the most Indiana thing ever. There's one thing I picked up. Indiana is very good about taking problems and washing themselves of the problem and then letting like Jeremiah's term is that they're like, they wash themselves a problem and then they hand all the local governments a gun with a bullet in it and say, well, here you go. And now they have to deal with like, I mean, like the jail issue was a them problem. They changed the classification of what, what.
Level sixes had to stay in the county.
So all of a sudden the, all the county jails were overcrowded. Meanwhile, state prisons had huge amounts of occupancy that were available. And then they kind of like, eh, we kind of corrected that. And then like, there's local, so they're very good about like, hey, we, we took this tax away. Cause look at us, we're doing great.
Yeah.
But like, oh, by the way, here's all the other, here's all the ways that the, the local governments can now recreate this tax, but they get blamed for it. So they're very good at that.
And then, and then some of them, they're going to expire in 20 years. And at that point, now what do we do? What, what's, uh, and I asked Jason Simler, Baker Tilly in this, I said, is the trend, do you see this continuing where we're just going to be throwing darts and having to pick and choose and, and pulling in this little tax and that little tax? It makes it very difficult to fund the county as a whole, when you've got to pull little pieces from all these little buckets all over the place.
I'll tell you what, well, one of you guys decides you want to run for Congress, somebody like Jefferson Shreve is going to run ads against you saying that Kyle Allen raised taxes 74 times in his seven years on the council.
Yeah. I'm so glad that the primary is almost over. So I don't have to see all the, the statewide or Congress, the federal, you know, the federal races anymore. Man, they drive me nuts. And I don't watch that much TV, but when they start creeping into, I love the weather when like you can't, the weather forecasting nerdy stuff I look at when on my YouTube feed or feed, whatever.
You gotta get the premium.
So I'm a cheapskate too.
Premium package.
I know, I know. But so I am a cheapskate. And then from that standpoint, I don't like paying more than I have to for, for things. But I understand there are some things that we have to pay for.
NFL draft update. Caleb Williams went to the Bears. Uh, Jaden Daniels from LSU quarterback, I believe, went to the, uh, Washington football team commanders, uh, formerly the Redskins, but we can't say that. Uh, and the, uh, New England Chitriots took Drake May, the quarterback from, uh, North Cackalacky. Zach, final thoughts, man?
Well, I was going to come with the one thing I, I do seem kind of curious is like, a lot of these taxes kind of have little, they have certain things they're allowed to use them for. And so you're talking about trying to, you're trying to fund an entire county government, but then all of a sudden you're having to individually tax all these little things. It makes it hard to like, I would imagine to like budget out a whole budget, like, because eventually there's going to be a little department that just doesn't have a tax. And they're like, well, how do you fund this department? Cause you haven't been given a tax because you've got this other tax that's for that. And so, yeah.
I'm glad you under, I'm glad you understand that and point that out. That's.
I'm not very educated on what's going on in the county. I attend, I can't say I attend most all because I missed two, I did miss two city council meetings.
You missed two and they borrowed $3 million.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I missed two city council meetings and the city went, couldn't pay their bills. I, I didn't even pay to get in.
So it's your fault.
Apparently it was. Cause there was, I literally, I, I have missed probably a half a dozen meetings in like five or six years. And I missed two in a row for good reasons. One of them I was out of state. One of them I was at a, a funeral calling. And I get back and they're like, they didn't have the money to make payroll. Like they're, they're like bonding to make, to pay the bills. So, but you do see that where like, people are like, you know, why don't you use skate park? Why didn't they not build a skate park? They should have filled them potholes. Well, that's two different things and they can't do anything. And like the art money's been interesting because it came with a lot of strings. And then they've gradually taken the strings away from the art money as it's gone on, which has been nice.
You can find ways to reasonably tie that money to economic development.
Yeah.
Or to, to help.
$50,000 for Eclipse overtime though?
I want to, I, I do kind of wonder how that panned out because those crowds did not show up.
The crowds did not pan out, but I thought that it was a very reasonable proactive step to take to have the necessary individuals on duty in case something happened.
Festival downtown that was nice and stuff. Yeah. I mean, I was, I live in the middle of Newcastle. I watched it from my house. And then I walked back to my house and pulled out my property tax bill. Literally my property tax bill came on Eclipse day. And like, I have a drone. I buzzed my drone around, did some spots within like a half mile or so of my house. I'm like, oh, they like this schools were shut down and there were 20 cars in the parking lot at the field house. And so, yeah, that was one of those things. So I did kind of wonder, I'm like, man, everybody allocated, like everybody allocated money because the powers that be were saying, be ready, be ready. Like
everywhere.
We were told like 50,000, 70,000 people. I think I heard somebody said that Bloomington was going to get like 300,000 people. And it's like, it just never materialized.
It didn't materialize, but you know, if you think we were expecting 50,000 more people, the way I kind of rationalize it was maybe a thousand dollars of extra service and duty per each thousand dollar or a thousand people that are anticipated. That, that seems pretty reasonable, especially since it wasn't something that ended up costing the citizens actual money.
Yeah.
Well, it was out of our federal pocket, not our county pocket. Different, different bucket.
You didn't have to, yeah, you didn't have to. Ooh, I don't want to. I have a lot of different ideas when it comes to monetary theory and, and, and federal funding and, uh, but we don't have to get into all that tonight.
But no, I don't have, have much. The weather's all over the place. If you have it mowed, I'm sorry. Cause it's going to be real rough in your yard. We discussed a little bit in Patreon, but I've got some, I told them, I've got some neighbors that haven't mowed yet this year and they started mowing last week and they're still, they're still working on it. It's taking them some time. Other than that.
Mini marathon coming up for you?
Next week. Yeah.
You and patron Andrew Bowman are running together?
So yeah, last long run was last weekend. I got seven done in the rain. I'll do like six or eight this weekend at some point.
You're approaching a thousand days in a row of running at least a mile.
I'm not quite to a thousand. I'm like at eight, I'm still at 800.
Marvin Harrison Jr., fourth pick to the Cardinals.
There was a, I heard rumors that they thought that Ursay might make a real pull to try and get, but I don't think they could have traded that high to get him.
Is he that good?
Well, I think he's, I think he's very good. But what he went four, I guess I don't know if Drake may was Drake may the third or whatever, but he's apparently he's very good. And he's also Marvin Harrison Jr., which means we are a very nostalgic city and Ursay is a very nostalgic guy.
To whatever glory we had.
Yeah. And so if you can somehow pull in a connection to the Peyton Manning era, then great. I mean, 846 days.
846 days in a row. We're very proud of you.
I haven't really kept, I don't really keep that much track of that anymore, but I check every once in a while. Somebody asks me.
So the mini marathon will be about day, day eight, 60 for you, eight, eight, 60 ish.
Eight, 50.
You'll be finished. You'll be finished running before I wake up. I'm quite certain. That's, that's usually the tradition.
Uh, probably not. I'm going to be kind of slow this year. I did, I did, there was a cool race. I did a race over the weekend. Me and Dr. Matthews, Carrie Barrett's husband, or Carrie, Dr. Barrett, just a different doctor. We both did the fun thing where we did runs and then we took a break and showed up to a 5K. And both did pretty well for having already run. I'd run seven miles, he'd run five miles. But that was fun. I saw, I saw Carrie, I saw Aaron Dickens, talked to Aaron Dickens for a bit about city stuff and other things. And that was the Archie's Promise 5K. It was in Baker Park. So that was fun to go do a 5K locally. I hadn't been able to do that in a while, but other than that, I'm just trying to enjoy the weather.
You asked about, if you didn't have to answer to anybody, would you call it the monarch?
Yes, sir.
So I think the craziest thing I would do would be, I would max out every single tax to the fullest extent possible for one year. Get a massive influx of cash for the county to pad our 80 day fund, then get rid of all of those taxes. Year two, have one bad year where everybody feels the pain. And then going forward, now we can start taking care of the things that we want and not just scrambling to take care of the things that we need. If I didn't have to answer to anybody, you gotta go about finding the money in a legal way. So that would be the only legal way I could think to do it.
Sounds an awful lot like Mitch Daniels first, uh, first state of the state of Chris.
Is that me? I can't remember.
He, uh, he came in and he said he wanted everybody, he wanted 1% ad additional tax on everybody for a year, I think. That was, and I think he got, he got, he got, he got a very chilly reception to that.
Where did the state go from an, from a, uh, budget and standpoint after that?
Yep. But then things looked pretty good in 2005, 2006 and on.
Yeah, they look pretty good. How many bridges have, has N dot built this year in the last two years?
Quite a few.
There are bridges that should have been done probably in 2007, eight, nine.
Well, if we're, if we're talking Mitch Daniels policy, he, he leased out the, the Indiana toll road and dropped about $3 billion in the N dot budget that, uh,
But yeah.
That, that helped out a certain, uh, bridge company.
Uh, you, you talk about the 1% though. How nice would that be compared to like, the city's running into this where the city did not change their water rates for, has not changed their water rates in 17 years. And so now they're pulling out of the Indiana Regulatory Commission or Utility Regulatory Commission, whatever, the I U R, I U, something rather C.
Indiana Utility Regulatory.
Yeah. And they're pulling out that in which most municipalities have, or most, uh, utilities have. And they're like, oh yeah, it's going to be, and like, I think most people would be happy if with like small incremental boosts when needed in taxes to cover things as opposed to oh, we're going to slam you with like a 24% property tax increase. Cause like everything, it's like gas prices. I don't mind if gas prices go up a little bit here and there. It's when they go up 50 cents in a day or whatever, that gets irritating.
It is.
Plan for that stuff. It's the inconsistency that gets irritated.
Very good. Final thoughts from you, uh, Mr. Kyle Allen.
I appreciate you guys having me here. I wish we could have talked to Indy car racing a little bit more. Uh, we can do that after the show, but, um, yeah, I'm happy to be here. I'm, I'm proud to do what I do. Um, I'm open to discuss. I wish people, if I'm not on the streets walking around much, but, uh, if I was walking.
The mean streets of Knightstown, Indiana.
I, I know, or like just walk into the, to the courthouse for, I wish people would just come and chat. I, I'm.
Have you thought of doing coffee hours like Councilman Dickens does? Councilman Aaron Dickens says, hey, I'll be at the coffee shop for three hours. Come sit down and tell me your problems.
That's, that's a good idea. Problems limited to.
That used to be a thing when I was a kid.
The third house, legislators would do it. Yeah.
Yeah. Beverly Guard and Tom Saunders would go and they'd go to Max, they'd like, we're going to be at Max's Steakhouse on a Saturday morning. And people could just come and like bug them.
Chat. Yeah.
And yeah, that is a weird thing. I got made fun of for just talking about Newcastle last week, uh, by the judge, but like, we are kind of, there are people in like the live up in Milltown that never set foot in Newcastle. There's people that are out by Knightstown that might not ever set foot in Newcastle and never interact unless they're called like high school sports fans that are bouncing around games. There's parts of the county that never interact with other parts of the county. So it's kind of, yeah.
There's some interesting dynamics, you know, coming here and not being from here, uh, being a, a transplant. Yeah. Every community is different, but as much as communities can be different, there are always common issues and common knuckleheaded things that come up for lack of a better term.
Yeah, it's a, it's really an interesting race running in the, the entire county. So you have, you know, every, every township, every spot, every voter is, uh, is, is in your focus area, right? So you, you live in the Wayne Township area, I guess, in, in Knightstown. But all the way up to Summit Lake or, you know, the Stony Creek, Bluntsville area up to Fall, Fall Creek and Middletown and down into Dublin, down to southeastern corner of the county. You got them all.
It's all over the place.
Yep. I, I think there's like 19 incorporated communities in Henry County. It's, it's truly phenomenal, the amount of enclaves that we have.
There's nothing more interesting than pulling up Google maps and like scrolling through areas. And you're like, I've never heard of this place. And there's a, and it's probably like two houses and it's not really a real town, but there's like a bunch of little communities.
I discovered GIS and going through all that stuff.
And you're like, what is, what is this place? Like, I mean, I bet there's people that like out towards Milltown and don't know about Ray'sville. Yeah. Like that's a place that exists.
Ogden's the one that, yeah.
I grew up in Messick, which is, uh, four houses. Yeah.
You're like, you see roads and you don't realize they're named after like places that the road goes or goes through or goes near or something like that. And.
Kyle, here's the question, if you've lived in Henry County long enough, what's the name of the town on, on 38 west of Newcastle?
Oh yeah. I know what this game is.
You used to have a high school, which you wouldn't know. Uh, it's.
You're not talking Kennard, are you?
Nope, nope. It starts with a C.
Yeah.
It's, it's a pronunciation.
How is it pronounced?
Yes, 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 yes.
I always say Cadiz.
Oh, there you go. Failure.
Caddis.
Trouble.
Just Caddis.
And then I say that because. That's the way I always heard it when I was watching the weather on like local news.
Nothing's funny.
And the weather guy's like, oh yeah, take cover if you're in Cadiz.
Yeah. It's like when you hear somebody who's from out of state and they, they pronounce caramel, Carmel.
Yeah.
And you're like, oh, you don't get it.
Carmel by the cornfields.
You're not around here.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Kyle, for, for being here, taking us up on the invitation. So thankful that we had all of the candidates in the race and giving people a reason to actually go out. And, and vote and, you know, it's, it's really frustrating when you, when you have what we've had in the city elections in the past where it's like, yep, there's not a single contested, we're going to cancel the primary. That didn't happen this time. Very thankfully. We've got a lot of really good, uh, really good folks running and, and some. Excellent ideas being brought at the table. So thank you for.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Re-upping and being here. Next week, we will conclude the, uh, the candidate series brought to you by Wyland's Flowers and Incanale Brew House. We will have the. Uh, coroner candidates. Uh, they're both invited so far. Brian Clark has taken us up on the offer. Uh, Bill Palmer has, we've talked to him and. If he can make the schedule work, he'll be here with us. But if he's, if he's out of town, he's out of town. But we at least have a coroner Brian Clark scheduled to join us. Uh, and then we're going to get into the month of May. That'll, that's actually May 2nd. Schedule is going to bounce around all over the place. We are going to do a Tuesday night election. Episode in here, uh, where we're going to tap dance until we get the results. And then we're going to read the results and go, huh, that was cool. And then that'll be the show. And then maybe we'll tell some stories too. I don't know. I don't know what to expect, but that's, that's what we're going to do is we're going to do the show Tuesday night as the election results come in. And thoughts and prayers to everybody as we, as we try to do it.
Get, go vote.
So yep. And we've been, uh, we've been telling folks, vote now. You can stop the mailers. I got, I've not voted yet. Uh, I think I got three more mailers today. Jameson Carrier hit me up. Mike Speedy spent some money and I think, uh, Suzanne Crouch is in my mailbox today too.
I just, yeah.
They don't stop.
It's awful.
They don't stop.
I'm glad for the US Postal Service. They're the real winner here. Cause they're the ones delivering all this garbage.
Plus Big B.
Yeah. Whoever's recycling it or hauling it off. But like, I hope they know that I don't even like, especially the huge ones like.
No. Uh, fifth pick of the draft as we sign off here. Joe Alt from Notre Dame, the Golden Domer. He's going to go play for Jim Harbaugh in, uh, Los Angeles with the Chargers. So with that, we say thank you guys so very much. We will catch you next week.